I turned off.
End of January, beginning of February.
They started earlier. They started two weeks earlier. Just three weeks. I think so. Okay, like the call, the meeting of the Munster Town Council on Monday, March 6th to order. Roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Present.
Councillor Mellon, Councillor Tulowitzki.
Present.
Councillor Kulturitis and Councillor Gardner.
We present.
Thank you. We have three, we have four of them.
Very good. Then I would ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, there's a public hearing for the waiver of noncompliance relating to the tax abatement. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of a public hearing?
I'd like to move it eighteen thirty-three to a plan. What are they waiving? Somebody I gathered has a tax abatement and they.
We're going to direct that to our attorney.
So Mike, as part of the Centennial Park Development Agreement.
Okay.
Part of that development agreement included residential tax abatements for the condos that were going to be. And that was years, that's seven, eight years ago, that that development agreement was executed. And so what this waiver is, is because that that building was not built at the time, right? There weren't people that applied for the abatement. So now we're going through this abatement process and we're waiving the fact that it wasn't. They didn't apply back when it was not built, right, which they couldn't have done.
Okay, so you're going to let them apply for the abatement?
Correct.
Now.
Correct.
Okay, like I said, I want to clarify to you what what this was all about.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Very good. Is there anyone else here to speak on behalf of the waiver on the public hearing for the waiver of noncompliance related to tax payment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and then we'll open up the public comment section of the meeting. We kindly asked that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a room spokesman. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and we'll refer questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and responses. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the during the public comment section of the meeting? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. Second. There's a motion, a second, all in favor for any discussion. Seeing none, roll call, yeah, roll call, please, right?
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon, Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis and Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Four zero.
There are a number of items under old business, the first of which is ordinance eighteen ninety-four, which is the home rule ordinance authorizing the promotion of town business through various means. This is the second reading. Is there anything else to add?
No, no change from last reading.
No change.
Very good. I'm moving that ordinance number eighteen ninety-four on second reading. I'll say there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I just wanted to point out, there's one typo in the ordinance under section one. It looks like there's an extra word. Okay, so the the town's hereby authorized to budget an appropriate funds in the general fund or any other unnecessary expenses between four and expenses. There's an extra word. Oh.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Second item under old business is ordinance eighteen ninety-five, which is the amendment number one to the salary ordinance. This is again on second reading.
I move we adopt ordinance eighteen ninety-five on second reading, yes, presented.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Just quick question. I did.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Item C under old business is the ordinance eighteen ninety-six, which is the amending vehicle towing and impounding regulations. This is also second reading. Wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move with that eighteen ninety-six on second reading.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I would just note that this is vehicle towing and impounding regulations. Part of the rationale for amending is so part of it is just to update the language and bring it into a good order. I have no issue with that. The other part is to make changes applying to the parking in a Centennial Park. I've been consistent about this. I think this continues to create now an experience where people might come to the park, have to pay money, get a violation, and now they might have an experience in our town of having their vehicle impounded and towed at a great expense. So for that reason, I hope opposing this ordinance tonight.
You're going to have other comments? Roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
No.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Three one.
First item under new business is the disposal of surplus property from the clerk treasurer's office. There's a memo in front of us with recommended action.
Mr. President, I know that we approve the disposal of surplus equipment from the clerk treasurer.
Second.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We're tired of tripping over these old chairs.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Item B under new business, I might have had an old ordinance.
Yes, this is updated to reflect the discussion at Agenda Review. This is the resolution that the public hearing was held to announce. And your proposed approval would effectuate the outcomes that our attorney described to Mr. Tulowitz of eighteen thirty-three to the plane. It allows us to continue to move forward to honor the development agreement between the town, Economic Development Commission, the redevelopment commission, Centennial Partners LLC that was adopted in September of twenty thirteen. And as Dave said, it was impossible to make that happen at the time. It is possible now and we would like to honor our agreement.
There is a recommendation from the council.
I move we approve resolution twenty-one oh five, a resolution of on certain noncompliance requirements related to the tax.
All second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Similarly, I found it, but I think it's a typo in here. I was around the last meeting, so this one is on page two under the top where it says forms. The town council recently expects the Munster Economic Development Commission will make favorable recommendations to designate geographic area upon with the residential units. I think it just on which the units will be located.
Steve, where is it on here?
Page, page two.
Oh, okay. Where's the paragraph?
At the third line.
Okay, all right, and there's a which that should be aware.
Yeah, the area, the third line, that area upon with the residential units. Yeah, upon which it's the.
Gotcha.
And my question was related to that same paragraph. As I read this, this is contingent upon the Munster Economic Development Commission actually making that recommendation.
Yes.
Yes. For the comment earlier, this, I know you just said, I'm reiterating the importance of Centennial Park and since the village and these condos and the new residences in town just to honor the agreement that was on the spirit of the agreement that was put together ten years. Now that people have moved in, we don't want them to feel that they have been bamboozled or they were told they're going to pay zero taxes the first year and increasing over the ten years. So as it reads, it will be for all those that are occupied right now, twenty twenty-three payable, twenty twenty-four will be the first year of the abatement. And for new apartments that are developed at the moment that they're purchased or occupied, that will begin the start of that ten-year period. So I support honoring that agreement.
Very good. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to item C, which is the forty-fifth grade separation change order. Change order that we kind of like to see. It's a zero dollar, but it's about material. We have just a quick explanation of why we have to have this change order.
This is an end-up requirement for project closeout and they want to memorialize all items that were used in the project that were not originally bid. So this is, this is an approved alternate, but they need to have that for their due diligence for purposes I don't know.
Mr. President, I would move, I would move to, in fact, to approve change order number zero three six for end-up contract A dash three six two nine amount of zero dollars and zero cents, which I know is listed at zero point zero 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 percent of the original contract.
So correct.
Precisely.
The best can correct.
There is a motion, is there a second? Second. Motion, a second, any discussion? I will say that my favorite sentence is the one that says the total cost of this change is zero. I will say that Steve Black's actually making personal shots. Very good. Roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Then we move into item D, which is the pedestrian signal at the White Oak and Forty-Fifth Street interchange. Deputy Tom Andrew, Tom Maso, anything to add to this?
No, nothing to add to my memo. The picture in the memo, though, it doesn't show the new curb cuts or curb ramps that are there. They were just put in last fall. But that's where the PED signals will be installed.
Very good. Thank you. Who's recommendation?
I move we authorize Tom Andrew to approve the code from Midwestern Electric LLC to install the pedestrian signals for ten thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
All second. Motion, a second. Any discussion?
That's going to include the striping.
No, it does not include the striping, but I know that we will be continuing to work on on refreshing all the striping that we didn't get to last year. I don't know if you noticed that we did a lot last year. So that will be put on when when we get a contractor. They will put them up as soon as, I would assume, as soon as we get them going, they will.
Right, but I would feel more comfortable with the striping and putting the symbols up.
Okay. We can, we can always put them up and bag them.
They should be tied together. This, putting one up and not the other could possibly cause a problem where you're turning. Someone walking and they think that it's the right area to walk in, they're walking closer to the car, he's just going to stop. It could be confusing, right? It could be a little confusing. I would, right, whatever.
We can, we can, we can pay piano keys that will be taken.
You go to the soccer field, when you go to the soccer field, you walk right over there.
Okay, yes.
Very good. Any other comments or questions?
This does fit into an overall strategy that the town is embarking upon and supportive of the town council to promote safety in town. Appropriate traffic, pedestrian interactions. And so I'm glad to see this. I've ridden my bike there and it's confusing. There's been an accident a number of years ago there by train crossings. So improving safety is very favorable. This is about Forty-Fifth Street, but not really about this, but I just thought of that having driven down today. And there's a number of holes. Is there any plan to, as I was thinking as you were talking about kicking the street? Is there any plan to resurface this part of Forty-Fifth?
Right now, West Forty-Fifth is the priority.
Yeah.
In the weekly report, there was a discussion of three hundred thousand dollars of funds from the county that could be programmed to do this. And we also, based on the work study that happened at the last Agenda Review, we are mobilizing to do more work. Is there a plan right now to do East Forty-Fifth? No, there's not, but it could easily fit into a number of opportunities that we have coming up.
I mean, the money should be deployed to the ones that needed the most. And I'm not sure, I don't know that this is the one that needs the most, but since we're doing East Twenty-Fifth, the bridge is getting done right around there as well.
To what you just mentioned, I wasn't referring enough at the beginning to give a record of that strip is a fairly small strip of Southwood to White Oak. And I think if we're going to be completing Forty-Fifth west, we should actually just take care of that all at the same time.
Because if it underpasses all the way.
So I would agree. It's starting to get a little. I know I like, I have a lot of residents complaining about nature, but that's on our radar, radio, that's what we're doing. With what
I think it's an extra point in priority if there's something really egregious that I would possibly go first, but get into discussion.
Thank you. Here's a motion and a second in front of us with regards to the signal at Forty-Fifth and White Oak Avenue. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. And letter E, paving and water main improvements, White Oak, Amelia and Beverly. This is the two-day crossing match at Grant. Twenty-two dash two. Looks like bids were solicited and received. There's a recommendation in the in the packet.
President, I move that we award Mills Milestone Constructors Contract, Contractors North Incorporated, the contract for paving and water main improvements, White Oak, Amelia and Beverly. Second, for the bid price of one, that's one million, more than six thousand thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. I can tell you my neighbors will be happy when this over.
This, I know we just finished voting, but this was the bio square.
Correct.
Yes, this will be exciting. All eyes on this in three years.
Yeah. Very good. Item number four, reports. Any reports from the council? No portfolio reports, announcements, our next meeting will march, oh, Wendy, do you have an announcement?
I have reports. I have two reports. I am well ready to go. I have two things I'd like to share at the meeting tonight. One is that nursing that last week and we learned that Munster is one of seven communities that is getting a little piece of the highway safety improvement funds from a grant that we applied for. We originally applied for nine point five million, we'll end up with five point six five million and it's for the use of the emergency vehicles and the opticon system. So that'll be assisting them emergency vehicles throughout the region to get through our traffic light safety. In total, two hundred and seventy-four intersections are encompassed as well as three hundred and forty-three vehicles. Munster will have thirty intersections, fifteen fire trucks and twenty-eight police cars. So it's a great opportunity and it's an eighty-twenty split. So we're very excited about this. The bad news is we won't get the funds till twenty twenty-eight.
Till when?
Twenty twenty-eight, yes. So, but still, it's a great program. We're
Until we, until we applied for this grant, I didn't realize, I think we've probably all seen the bright white lights that that come on when a police, an ambulance or police car is approaching an intersection, the lights turn red. But I, and I figured or knew that the police can establish, can make that happen. But they can't make it happen if they're turning at the light. And it only affects the lights in front of them, not to the right or to the left. If they turn and there's another light there, we'll have to kind of like this and come on until later. And this will take care of that problem. And those lights will be operative as well.
Yes, it changes it to a GPS system, which is.
Which will make, make it a lot safer.
Yes.
The one I think about this is like in Pac-Man when you eat the power pellet. No matter where you go, you get to the red lights.
Thank you. Your next, your next report.
We spent a busy week in the clerk treasurer's office. This past Wednesday, Baker Tilly presented a comprehensive financial plan that was prepared with the authority of this council in twenty twenty-two. The financial comprehensive plan can be found on the town of Munster website, which is munster.org. The plan contains valuable information for financial planning for the preparation of the twenty twenty-four town budget and moving forward to help plan for a wide variety of financial decisions for the town, ranging from pay rate increases to capital projects. Some of the highlights I'd like to share at this time is that the town of Munster has historically budgeted beyond our expected revenues and expenditures. This was done deliberately to maximize our capture of tax revenue. We are learning that we can tighten our budget and still capture the funds we need. We will be working with Baker Tilly this upcoming budget season to make that tightening and to capture the maximum funds we deserve. The other key item from this report is that the town is in a strong cash position. We understand our conservative practices in the past five to seven years have enabled us to be in a strong, in this strong position. Several things have impacted Munster and these were both planned and unplanned. We prepared for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty fiscal clip or the reduction of the reduction to Munster property taxes due to a change in property tax assessments, and we were very conservative in our spending. We had the Forty-Fifth Street over or underpass, which was twenty years plus in planning. And once construction began, we did not want any financial surprises. The COVID pandemic led many experts to advise municipalities that our revenues would decrease in certain funds. However, we were pleasantly surprised to find that COVID was resilient and advantageous with increased tax and miscellaneous revenues as well as grant opportunities. Again, we have been conservative in our spending. On the horizon, we have several projects in the works. Main Street from Columbia to Hardditch, the Ridge Calumet Streetscape and the Train Station Betterments. Our awareness allows us to see a need and respond quickly, well, for government quickly anyway. For example, talking about Forty-Fifth Street, Forty-Fifth between Calumet and State Line is in need of a repair. And as a result of our financial position, we are able to make roadway improvements in twenty twenty-three. We are also working to repair and maintain our water tanks. Our goal is to pay for these projects with cash while limiting or not having to take on any additional debt. This plan will help us to make these decisions. I hope that we continue to make conservative fiscal policies while using the funds that we do have for municipal improvements. This is a fluid document and is best viewed holistically. And if you have any questions or concerns, please contact me and I'll do my very best to provide an explanation to you. So that is the Baker Tilly Comprehensive Financial Plan.
And once again, people can find that full report online on the front page of the website.
Absolutely.
I have a few comments.
Of course you may.
Very nice. I just looked it up online. It's the second link under their comprehensive financial plan. And while there are a lot of pages to it, it's essentially going through each of the primary funds that make up our budget. So if you learn to read the numbers page and then the graph you can kind of read the whole report. The graph page is showing the cash reserves at the end of each year and projected out years in the future. And so it's important to know how much cash we have on hand. Bottom, there's like a dotted line. It shows fifteen percent, that's roughly two months of cash on hand. And then there's another one which is fifty percent, so that's about a half here.
And our goal is to never dip below the fifteen percent in in the wise that are spending and spend so we don't have more than fifteen percent. Unless we have some projects that we're working toward.
Right, so if you're reading this, then you know, might take a little bit of time to study how to interpret those two pages, but then you can read the whole document. I understand it well. Page fifty-six shows the fund descriptions and potential uses. That's like your table of contents or your guide to the rest of the back. Fifty-eight to sixty might be of particular interest. That's the capital improvement lines, things you hear us talking about up here. You can see some more details and a holistic view of what the plans, what the town's capital expenditures are. And then starting on page sixty-seven, there are some of these bar charts that does some benchmarking of Munster versus surrounding communities through population and number of other financial metrics. So just wanted to, I found it to be a very useful project and I wanted to provide a little bit of guidance for those who might
Very good. Thank you. Other counselors? Ken, Dr. Andy, see what happens when you have a normal ending?
Yep.
I told you I had two things.
Okay.
He said council and I thought he would go right to the clerk treasurer.
Announcements, again, March twentieth is our next council meeting at seven PM. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So I'll move. Third and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that Steve that actually, okay. Nice to have everyone's input on the adjournments, for second and the third.
I'll check.
Mr. Castro.
Here I come. We might do be.
Anyone know how that game ended?
Fifty-four, fifty-three, hammer.
Oh, man. Last second shot or no?
Truly had a last second shot. I don't know from how far away it got ripped out.
I love that it was a good game.
Yep.
Okay, just, we're going to a meeting now. I will call the Munster Redevelopment Commission regular meeting on March sixth to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stone.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon, Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis. And Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
Also, school board liaison, John Castro.
Present.
Excellent. Nice to see you as always.
Very good.
There's always a public comment.
Public comment section of the meeting.
Some use out of this time.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the Munster Redevelopment Commission from the public? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. No old business nor new business, any reports this time?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any announcements to make? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any adjournment?
Two is this, all we needed.
All right.
All right, nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Glad I completed my part.
Yeah. Yeah.